Okay. Welcome to everyone tonight. I hope not a lot of confusion. We received a lot of people tonight. If we had a chance to, uh, work that previous room. It makes me happy.
No.
Our planner is not here tonight, so Joe Andrew is here.
I'm here as the administrator.
Yeah, I just want to get all that stuff up so we can get at it. We're gonna have roll call, please.
Roll call, Dan Miller.
Here.
Tom Wise.
Here.
Andrew Darian. Phil Bellinger.
Here.
Matt School.
Okay, can I get an approval for the agenda?
I don't make a motion to put the agenda down.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
There you go. Okay, how about approval of the, uh, minutes, our meeting minutes for us?
I'll make them up to you if it's early.
On favor? Okay. 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 Some things that are not on tonight.
What about you?
Is there a on tonight? Okay. Public hearing. Uh, on our previous, we touched base with it, but not for a long time and not for a lot. We had some comments from our previous planner. Uh, like said, we got paid once tonight. A lot of things. So, uh, this is for conditional rezoning, not just a rezoning. Yes. Somebody wants to start?
I did have just a question. Quickly, I think the topic I wanted to say was all the way.
Can you give us your name and, uh, who you're with?
Julie Hurd, um, with, uh, potential all of these. I don't know the question. This is a slight change to what you submitted with your.
Yeah. The director would like to read it, so we know what's changed.
We don't get.
This is, this was submitted with the, uh, application for conditional rezoning. It was dated October seventeenth. The only change is in paragraph number one. The old paragraph, and that should be in front of other board members. This conditional rezoning request would be inclusive of two following conditions. Number one, this is the old one, the one dated October seventeenth. A condition that limits permitted uses of the site to those currently under the O-one designation, plus less intense uses permitted in B-two for the purpose of operating an event venue. It's been corrected to read, number one, a condition that limits permitted uses of the site to those currently under the O-one designation, plus event venue.
And then by a may add, community number two, also.
Certainly, number two has not changed since act nine. Number two, maintenance of the existing buffer and screening surrounding the property to rent tree line as a grant.
I know that. Did you get any in the planner?
Yeah, but I had all that. My, uh, plan analysis.
I had that. It's running pretty close to what, uh, it said here. It's all worth the word, but it's been. I don't think it's me anymore. You guys take a couple of time. You get the whole.
So, the office district is for the audience.
Okay, so the office district is, well, first, there's two things the planning commission has to consider tonight. And the, uh, master plan that township adopted is what our planning and zoning ordinance is all about. So, we look at our master plan, then we put conditions on to the uses of each area. Uh, the master plan shows that area as a O-two, which is an office, and then it says for, uh, governmental use because it's adjacent to this hall here. And the township owns this parcel, and the one next to it, and the Mercino's own the office complex next to us. And then next to that is the residentially zoned area. So, an O-office district is typically similar to this use. It's a municipal office. That's an office building. Uh, it was built for someone of that, of that caliber. And as everybody knows, the office market is way down over these remaining office buildings. So, that's the answer to your question on that.
But the master plan was made way back when.
Crap, master plan's probably twenty years old. Master plans are to be upgraded every twenty years. This planning commission has already made, uh, motions and minutes that they're gonna be working on updating their master plan.
We have reviewed a few portions of one we've had to, but.
George, they changed the law from the twenty-year update to five years. Every five years you have to revisit.
Revisit.
Revisit to our master plan.
We don't have to change anything.
No. But we should change a few things. This is under virtual, and I think they had visions of grandeur that we were.
Vision for us to revisit.
A little more for the Metamore Township area, which isn't gonna happen eight times soon. Another nice thing to do.
So, I guess, uh, we had received one letter back. And, uh, secretary, care to read this in minutes?
This is a letter in respect to the notice of public hearing, addressed to the Metamore Township Planning Commission rezoning hearing. Um, it is from Matt Monroe, three eight one five, Linsley Drive. I sent a notice that invited me to submit public comment on a request to change zoning for the property above, so here it is. For the record, my short response to rezoning from O-one to B-two, conditionally or not, is a hard no. In fact, rezoning to B-one is also a hard no for me. Here's my not-so-short response. Years ago, I attended the planning board meeting before this property was rezoned for the original daycare. I was invited to give input, and mine was a hard no at that time as well. Subsequently, the board approved the original rezoning from residential to the required zoning for the daycare against the desire of most, if not all, of the adjacent residential property owners. The board cited their master plan as the basis for their decision. They stated that the original rezoning would create a transition from the businesses on the west side of the township hall to all of our residential properties directed to the east, north, and south. I didn't agree at the time, but in hindsight, it did just that. I stand corrected. The original daycare installed a pine tree perimeter and downward parking lot lighting. And, most recently, Mercino's have been very good neighbors, always maintaining their property, always maintaining their building and property and grounds, much appreciated. Rezoning this property for B-two, or B-one for that matter, conditionally or not, is not a transition, but an extension of the business district into the middle of numerous residential and agricultural properties. There are multiple residences adjoining three or four sides of this property. Five residential properties to the east and north share property lines with the property in question, along with one residence directly across Dr. Rowe. In addition, numerous other residential properties, including mine and Rockwood Estates adjacent to mine, would be subject to any ill effects, twenty-four-seven noise, odor, environmental issues, from the businesses or activities or events due to a prevailing southwest wind in our area. Also, we live in a diverse neighborhood, ranging from young families and old parts likely with grandchildren. Personal safety and property protection could be an issue with people that don't live here, wandering or driving from these businesses onto our property. Rezoning this property, conditionally or not, would give carte blanche to any businesses, yes, plural, on this property, both current and in the future, that bought or leased this property. Take a good look at the M twenty-four businesses and how property is being used. That's what B-two and B-one is. That's what rezoning will allow here. Almost anything goes today and tomorrow and in years to come. In conclusion, I don't know all of my neighbors anymore like in the old days. I tend to just kind of do my own thing, but a lot of them don't get invited to respond because they are not within three hundred feet, so hopefully this will help, uh, on their behalf if they feel the same way. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to respond. Signed, Matt Monroe, three eight one five, Linsley Drive.
And I believe we have not received any other letter or communications on that. So, I guess, before I get to the.
Anybody from the audience?
Well, Joe, do you want something?
Yeah, can I, uh, I'd like to address the roll report with the planning commission and the rest of the constituents and residents of the neighborhood. So, the township hires a professional planner to look at all planning-related uses of land. And this meeting was held last month. The applicants came in, the owners were here, residents were here, and the applicant pulled their request to rezone the property. Uh, they were looking at that time to rezonate from office to a B-two use group. Uh, they pulled that, they're not doing that. We're here tonight to address the conditional rezoning. Now, conditional rezoning is completely different than a rezoning. Uh, they're gonna keep the office zoned land and add a use from the B-two zoning book to be used on that land. Instead of having a B-two use group that would be anything and everything allowed in B-two, they're simply asking for one use, and it's an banquet event facility. So, it would stay the same, O-two zoning, with a conditional use of a B-two event. That's it. Nothing more can be done there in B-two. So, you would not have a tire-changing store, you would not have a ready-mix plant, you would not have a manufacturing facility. You would only have a facility for an event center. Now, the building that's on there is kind of set up for that. The parking lot's already in, the lights are already in. The applicant hasn't proposed any changes to anything like that at all. And if this board decides to allow for a conditional, uh, B-use group in the O-office district, uh, it's not the end of the story. Their recommendation would then go to the township board, and the township board would be the one to make that decision. Now, the beauty of asking for a conditional use like that for the applicant and also the landowner, and also everybody else around, is when it comes back in front of the planning commission, the planning commission can put on restrictions for that event center. They could put on, uh, no parties after midnight, uh, no parties on Wednesdays. They could put any conditions they want on at that time. Now, the professional planner, his report addresses all of this, and I'm gonna go over this with everybody. It's compliance with the master plan. The planning commission has to look at our master plan, and we have to comply with the master plan. So, the plan of this property now is an O-two use group. Uh, the O-two use group is because it's adjacent to this governmental use group of an O-two municipal building. Uh, it really isn't part of us, but it's in that master plan that way. Why now, it's hard to say. So, with that being said, it outlines the non-residential zoning district and future land use recommendations. And that's where our master plan, which this planning commission is working on, you have to look at, you know, what the uses are, being used today in office uses, and any other use for that matter. Then the second page of it is the analysis. Uh, with them not doing a full rezoning, because they're not, they're just doing a conditional, they wanna keep it office and add one caveat, one shingle, out of the business use group, which would be a banquet facility. Uh, it's important to know that the property lines are already buffered with pine trees, and the applicant has put in their letter that they're gonna maintain that, they're not gonna take anything of that away. It's also noted that their lights are already downward facing, and it's not been anything that's gonna change it. The only, uh, event use for the event center would be, uh, uses of timeframes, which, again, comes back in front of the planning commission under the site plan review for that use. Uh, the analysis of a proposed conditional rezoning, which, you know, we're not really rezoning it, we're gonna keep it that office, add that one use out of the B-two use to use that for the event center, but you have to see if there was a mistake in the plan as it was drafted. Not their plan, our plan, our, our master plan. And, uh, according to the planner, it appears there may have been a mistake because that parcel is not part of this township hall, nor has it been part of the government offices for this township. So, the current use as a zoning is consistent with the type of use associated with a public use, like a government complex. So, what they're proposing to do is like a public complex, no different than we have elections here, that people come here. Um, the proposed conditional rezoning would maintain a similar use and type with only the addition of an event facility. So, it will always still be an office, you could always still have people coming in, going, doing that parking lot as an office status.
Yeah, but they're not drinking. Like, like here, we're sitting, chilling out. Over there, they're drinking and coming in, so it's not the same.
But yeah, you'll have to address that to the chairman, and it's not the public.
Well, it's not the same, don't say the same.
But it's not the public's time to talk.
It's not time for public comment.
Just let him finish the talk.
I have to finish.
That would be time for public comment.
The professional planner's report.
And don't say the same.
When we get done with this, then the public will have a chance to voice their opposition or their proposed position on it. So, then the second part is the changes in the conditions. Uh, there has generally been a strong decline in demand for commercial office space. However, the township has only one other parcel designated as an office, so it does not appear that there is an inappropriate amount of property zoned or planned for office space in the township. That's why, you know, we have this piece and another piece, and there's other ones available for offices. Changes in the township policy, there's been no changes reflected in any other approved rezonings or texts in language that indicated change in the township policy. So, the planner saying in summary, the requested conditional rezoning of this parcel could be considered consistent with the township's policies and procedures of the master plan. Uh, the parcel is designated as a public land use, and the proposed use as office with the event venue is not dissimilar from a public use. So, the two are going the same hand in hand. The event center, the office, it's still the public coming to that park property. Uh, any additional review of potential event venue during the site plan review process could ensure that appropriate limitations of hours or operations and uses are established to minimize impact on adjacent residential properties. So, you know, that's saying the same thing. The applicant will still have to come back for site plan approval for the event venue on that property. And that would be the same consistency we do with anybody else in the township when they propose any use on any property. The planning commission has the last say on limitations or conditions of that. So, the next steps, the final decision of any conditional rezoning request lies with the township board. The planning commission must make a recommendation to the board on the requested rezoning. So, what does all that mean? That means the planning commission, you guys, have to look at this request from the applicant of an O-two district. They're gonna keep it O-two, that means it'll always be an office from here on forward. However, they wanna add a B-use group of the event venue only, not anything else out of the B-use groups would be allowed to be used there. Um, and the letter that they submitted today, they made the one change in that front line for the number one. If I could have that, I'd like to read that one more time to make it clear. Uh, this letter's dated November eighth, it's the same one that they submitted with the package to have this hearing. Uh, the conditional zoning request would be inclusive of the, of the two following conditions. A condition that limits the permitted uses of the site to those currently under the O- office designation, plus that event, uh, venue. So, they're, the first one said they wanna change it to B-two. They're not doing that. They're gonna leave it O-one, they wanna add the additional one use of the B-two to that property, the event center. Uh, no matter what happens to that, nobody else could do any other B-use group on it. It would only, could only be for an event center. You know, similar to what the Lyons Hall is, you know, that's a public building, they have, uh, venues there for public, and then also it's right about for weddings, uh, Christmas parties, and things like that. And so, that's very similar to this one. And the applicant's also saying they're gonna maintain the existing buffer and screening around the property line, which is important for the residents next to it. Uh, that property's been there a number of years, twenty years plus. Uh, the trees are already established, it's a privacy buffer. And earlier today, planning commission members in our files here at Metamore Township, I gave you a review. Metamore Township Administrative Procedure, it's a review of conditional rezoning applications. It's got the intent there, uh, pretty much the intent is the Michigan Enabling, Zoning Enabling Act. It's a state law, uh, this panel's required, this hearing's required, the applicants are required to submit paperwork, everybody's done that. The planning commission, uh, has to look at all the paperwork. Uh, the applicant did voluntary offer in writing conditions related to what they're looking for. That's A. B is, the required application for the consideration of the request shall be the same, that is considered for any without any other conditions. Uh, they're looking for just one part out of the B-use group to hang with that property that's consistent, they don't want anything else. Uh, C, the applicant's offer of conditions and purported authorizes use or developments not otherwise permitted to the resident or the requested zoning district. Uh, they're not asking for anything else outside of what the old use is, except for that one venue out of the B-use. Uh, the proposed part of the offer and conditions that would require a special land use may only be commenced, if the special land use was, it could be granted on that, of that property, you can't grant a special land use for that B-use group of an event, so that's why they're asking to have that conditionally added to the zoning. And, you know, the word's conditional, doesn't mean all-inclusive, it's conditional. Uh, the last one there is, uh, the site plan approval would have to still come back in front of you guys, uh, whatever, if the conditional rezoning, you guys elect to proceed forward with it, it goes to the township board before anything happens, then any development that they propose to do is coming back to the planning commission for, uh, site plan review approvals. Uh, then the last one, it's entered voluntarily by the applicant. The applicant's voluntarily are offering this. Uh, nobody twisted their arm, nobody promised them anything, they're voluntarily asking for this use on that property. And then, uh, part three is, you guys have to review it, you're the planning commissioners. And then after you review it, you say yea or nay, it then goes to the township board. The township board has the same process that we have here tonight, uh, to say yea or nay on it. And then, uh, after that, it's an approval with, uh, conditions. So, whatever was conditioned at this meeting, and if it goes to the township board and they approve it, whatever was conditioned at that meeting, that sticks with it. So, it's not that this meeting tonight is an end-all, do-all of everything, this is just an opportunity to see if this is what the master plan is looking like for any future consideration. Was that clear enough?
Pretty much.
And if anybody has any questions from the board, uh, now would be the time to ask me before we get into public comment.
Oh, thank you. The board's been achieving.
Uh, I want to apologize for that also. Uh, that was on my desk this evening when I arrived here at six-thirty. I wasn't aware of this township policy regarding this, that's why I brought it to everybody tonight, that's why I explained it to everybody here at a public hearing. And this here is how we do it in Metamore Township. This document's dated two thousand and six, so the board approved this in two thousand and six. This is the policy, this is how it's done, and I, I led you guys right to the menu, and I read the menu too yet, and this is what you have to consider tonight.
I just have to get one thing straight in my mind. This is hypothetical, okay, they have the venue, they get approved for a special, or a conditional rezoning, and the venue fails. It'll revert back to office, correct?
So, anytime you do a conditional, and this is again a conditional rezoning, that runs with the land. So, the next buyer would have just that shingle hanging in there, unless there's another condition that, say, the planning commission puts on, that site planner do, or the township board puts on. So, to make this clear, this property is zoned office. Uh, it's gonna always be zoned office. The applicant voluntarily is asking tonight if they can still have their office zoning, but they wanna add one use out of the B to that office zoning.
So, this'll be just the first part because, as I look at that building, it's not really set up for a large area, say, two hundred people.
Uh, originally, it has room for a cafeteria, it has a kitchen in there, it's.
Cause I haven't been in the building, so.
It's.
This big.
It's, you know, open the doors and you could do what this applicant is asking to do. And so, pretty much the former use of it, uh, it's the same use, really.
Same size again.
Except that was private, and now we're inviting the public in under a business-type setting. Now we're inviting the public in under a business type setting. And that's hence why they're asking for that B.
So they want to have an extension added to that building?
If they did, it would have to go through the planning commission. And the planning commission has to approve any and all sites and site plans so they can do a site plan approval. And as you are all aware, you know, everything that comes in front of you, you get to look at, look at, recommend, redraw, conditions, say yea, yes, but be home by nine o'clock at night, things like that.
And once in a while, we should rest up?
Well, this is not a perfect world and we are all human, so...
I know.
There are times that they are.
I just wanted to say, thank you.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Not yet, we have the...
Okay, are you done up there? I just wanted, what you just said, did it make sense? And I just wanted to clarify.
Go get some questions, please. And I've got the little machine, I'm putting everybody on three minutes.
Public comments and questions.
So if that's as clear as I can paint the picture for you, we do have a professional planner that's looked at it. I explained to you exactly what that paperwork that you have, that I read, is what he's saying. And the planning commission has to make their determination. If you have something else for me?
Do you have a free message now? Okay, I guess we're going to go for public comment. I'm going to push the button and you're going to get, I think it's three minutes. We need your name, address, please, and then we'll go from there.
Please stand and give your name and address.
Terry McDonald, 3800 Mel's Road.
Could you say, Terry, what was your last name?
McDonald, M-A-C-D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
Thank you.
No, you just said that they weren't planning on doing anything with the building. On this paper, it says they had planned a 2500 square foot expansion on the back of the existing building. And described it as being an indoor facility, and then it would be an approximate 1.3 million dollar investment. So however they're not expanding, you just said, one just says on here that they plan on expanding.
Okay, I don't know that I said that. There's not going to, or they're going to. The point on this is if they do expand, it's got to come in front of the planning commission for site plan approval.
Oh, you actually said that, I didn't understand.
Well, then I said, then I missed both that.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't know what we were talking about.
I've been in the building, it's not big enough to have a wedding in right now. I've actually been in there. It's not big enough to actually hold people to have a wedding, like you said.
It'd be kind of late after approval to deny them the addition.
Right.
That's what you're saying, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
It says right here, they planned.
Right.
And trick that into us.
And that means it's very further ash.
I want to apologize to everybody, that was no trick on my behalf. I'm not here to trick anybody, I'm here to represent. You got the information, but then I'm late too, the district's doing some tests. Just put on...
They're planning on, and you go probably not aware of it, and our plan is just a company even aware of it. They're not even aware. Okay, let's move along.
Too late?
Okay, no.
3865 Linsley Drive. I'd like to state that the letter that Matt Monroe was a very good letter. And I, I agree, I think we agree with, with that letter. And I, I take that hard no. And ultimately, I don't know how many residents know that we currently have two facilities in Metamora that have these venues, with one that just outproved on best group, so that'll be a total of three. My question is to the board is, do we need a forecall?
That's a hard no.
Hard no. Yes. I don't know. You never know what's been needed out there until they approach you. So we try to keep an open mind, best we can.
Put it in your backyard, George.
Pardon me?
I said, put it in your backyard, George.
I'm trying to retain it.
Okay, anybody else, the public, want to say anything?
Sora Smolowicz, 3865. Sora, S-A-R-O-R-A, S-A-L-M-O-N-O-W-I-C-Z-Y-O-R-K-S. That takes up one whole minute. I would like to say my concern, along with what we just spoke about, is the increase, we were talking about people drinking, wandering around, the safety, people breaking into your vehicles, into your home, people driving up and down the road, the wear and tear on the road, and the decrease in the value of my home. When at some time I hope that someone decides to retire and we can move, that we actually get back what we put into the house, along with what the most common, not most common, I apologize, I'm nervous, I hate talking to nerdy people. But the current value would be of my home, which I feel would possibly decrease because now we have this venue in front and in the front yard of the time activities that are going to be happening and all of these other possibilities. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Yeah? Yeah.
My name's Chris Wallace, 3818 Mel's Road.
Mel's?
Yeah. I also agree full-heartedly with the letter that was written. My concern is, I have two small children. They play on the road. All of my neighbors are aware, all of my neighbors are vigilant. We live on a private road that we maintain ourselves. My concern is, as they stated, random people's coming down the road, come in their yard. You know, it's very easy to miss the driveway for there and them to end up on our road. It happens all the time. We try to limit it as much as possible and redirect people, give them directions off from our street. But with my children, that does concern me. They're not out at night, but with the event venue there, they could very well come down our street in the middle of the day. And with my children playing out in my front yard, that is very concerning to me.
George, I would like to comment to the people that live, you need to at least stand up and tell them where you live and what, how you feel about it. Don't just sit there and think that they're not, know that you're here for that.
You know, want to bring shirts?
Logan Finer, 3885 Linsley Drive. As he stated, we have a newborn. Noise is kind of a concern at this point. Like you said, I'm not a good public speaker either, so, nervous. And the traffic. I am the first drive. People are going to miss that drive, they're going to pull into my drive, turn around. So it's constant traffic in there. And for two, if you're going to have a wedding venue there, that parking lot's not going to hold 100 cars. So you're going to end up pulling on my road, parking on my property, tearing up my grass that I maintain, and who's going to, are they going to pay to fix my lawn? They going to keep the noise down? There's, there's a lot of things, so, like everybody else, I'm opposed as well.
Hi, I'm Cesar Linsky, 3845 Linsley Drive. I live right next to Matt and Logan. I agree with everything they said too, guys. We don't need noise there, we don't need people drinking, running around, being stupid, alcoholism, being stupid, they'll never get, you know. We make noise when we want to. And we, we bought a house out in a place where we don't need to live next to an event venue. And to see this happen, it just kind of sucks. I've only been there for five years, they've been there much longer than me, but I totally agree with everything they said, and that letter, that was great. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Gavin, 3830 Mel's Road. I'm actually the attached property to this property on that tree line that you're calling a buffering line. It does not stop any noise.
What was your last name?
Galvin, G-A-L-V-A-N.
Thank you.
That tree line, it doesn't stop any noise right now, even from the actual road, the trucks and things going by. It's not going to stop any noise from, yeah, the parties and things going on. You can't say it's the same thing as it is now as an office, because office buildings operate like 9:00 to 5:00, 9:06. You're talking later into the night. I'm literally listening to parties every night with, I monitor parties, basically. And with no, no ordinance, for me to say, hey, it's past 8:00, they can't be jamming that music, and I can't call the cops on them, I got to listen to it. It's literally next to my house. So I say a big no.
I heard that and understood it. I'm just disowning it. The board has got to hear that.
Anybody else in the public? Corey likes to have a drink, talk.
Yeah. Come down.
Corinne Hurd, 3821 Mel's Road, part of the cul-de-sac. And I just agree with what they all had to say. Alcoholics is unpredictable. And I'm...
Thank you.
Tim, get it out of your system.
Tim McDonald?
Tim McDonald?
3800 Mel's Road. 20 years ago, me and my wife were looking for a place to move to. Came out here to Metamora, felt the round, we loved it. Say again?
From where? Why do I got to say from where?
The city, the nice, quiet country.
We, we loved Metamora, loved our people. We went and sat at Greg's, small town, everybody knew each other. You know, this is the kind of place we want to be, people take care of each other here, right? So we went down Linsley, went to Mel's Road, we found a house. I went door to door and actually knocked on the neighbors' doors and Corwin to tell you this, and I said, what's the neighborhood like? It's calm, it's beautiful. What about the place on the corner? It's, it's a daycare, it's fine, it's nice and quiet, it's a beautiful neighborhood, right? I love going to weddings. We're in the parking lot, my wife's out there smoking a cigarette, I'm drinking a drink. We're loud and crazy. This is that wedding, in the parking lot, this is what happens. It isn't quiet. And you can say that it'll shut down by 11 or 12 o'clock, it won't, it won't be enforced. I love Metamora, I don't want to move. Help me with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public? I'll be grateful. Everybody spoke publicly tonight. Where were you when the first came out?
Florida.
I know. See, we're...
We're here now.
I know.
I'm back in town.
Some of the letters did go down to Mel's Road though. The letters only went...
I know. Some others, it doesn't go to your property.
Yeah.
Yes, but you aren't part of that area.
Yeah.
Some of it didn't be problem.
We're here now.
But anyway, I just, if they would have heard originally, maybe they would change and say, maybe not, I don't know. That's...
We got the whole street now.
Yeah.
Okay.
One more. Kevin Fletcher, 3828 Linsley Drive. I think all of us who live right here moved to this area because of its quiet, calm, kind of escape. We kind of give up the convenience of a large grocery store, department store, selection of restaurants, to be out in this area, in a calm, quiet place. I wouldn't like to lose that.
Your home is your safe word.
Okay. Any more public comments?
Yes. Susan Huff, 5047 Blood Road, Metamora. And I do understand the concerns of the neighbors, I don't blame you. But that piece of property is currently zoned office. It, in the master plan, is called for as public use. The intended use of it, according to the master plan, is a civic center. Civic centers have meetings, they have rooms that can be rented for weddings and showers, et cetera. So I think if you're uncomfortable with that, you might want to think about that, because that's the way it could go in the future, regardless whether the zoning changes or not, because that's the master plan. I wish you had all been here, I know a couple of you, I think it was Kevin and Matt last time, because the people who would like to purchase the property had a very nice presentation. They're not talking about a wedding barn, or, you know, they're talking about a venue where all, everything except perhaps the ceremony itself would happen indoors, not outdoors. All amplified music would have to be indoors, not outdoors. They talked about parking. And they talked about expanding parking, so parking would be done there on the property. They already have sketches for that. And it was a good presentation. I, I think as far as the traffic and the noise, those things were also addressed in the presentation. So I'm sorry, they were not given a chance, as the owners were not given a chance to speak to this, so that the rest of you could hear it before this meeting began, the public hearing began. These folks, the Mercinos, have been trying to sell this property for two years. They've shown it over, to over 40 people. None of them want to buy it for a use that's permitted by the zoning. So they have somebody who will buy it with this one little change. And I just, I think you have to consider the fact that you could be looking at being liable for taking if these folks can't sell their property for anything. Nobody wants it for office. And I know you guys and I wouldn't want a car lot there, or a number of other things that could end up there with just a zoning change. But this would be a very defined use, and as Joe said, it would have to be approved by the planning commission as far as the building enhancements, the parking lot enhancements, the hours of use, all of those types of things. So there would be restrictions and limitations. And I am just a little confused, because I know we came to a public hearing for a conditional rezoning. But it sounds to me, and this is my question, that we are not listening to a conditional hearing, excuse me, a public hearing on conditional rezoning. We're listening to a public hearing for adding a special land use to an O2 parcel, is that correct, Joe?
That is not correct. It's still a conditional rezoning, because we're keeping it the same old office zoning.
Then it's not rezoning.
Then we're taking a B use group and attaching it to that. So it's not changing the zoning of the whole parcel property, it's adding a B use group one to that property.
Okay.
If it is a conditional rezoning, it's still staying old, they're adding a B use group to it.
Thank you very much.
And that's according to the plan. We have a professional plan.
As the master plan goes, we've probably got to look at many things that have changed. And you've got to be flexible with these master plans. You just can't cut and dry, because everything's got to go one spot, that spot, and the other one, because it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. And that's why you've got to go back in, work with the master plan, and be flexible. And whatever, the legs in the back.
Karen Brusheko, I live in the village. So I just wanted to address a comment someone made about how we just had yet another wedding barn open here. This is from what I heard in the last meeting, this is going to be a very different crowd than when going to a wedding barn. That's going to have porta johns. Because I, I can tell you, if somebody invites me to a wedding that doesn't have heat and it has porta johns, I'm going to think I have other plans that day. But a venue that is indoors, the music is indoors, is also very different even than the Lions Hall. I would not personally ever have an event at the Lions Hall, because I know what it does to those neighbors when that sound comes out of there, nor do I want to use that venue at all. So this is a very different, based on the investment they said that they want to make, this is a very different venue than that. And it's, it's going to be more upscale. I don't think this is going to be people, you know, slamming 24 beers in the parking lot like my coworkers used to. This is a very different type of thing. With professional bartenders, licensed bartenders, that type of thing, people watching out, people wanting this to be a good, sustainable business. People have talked about the road. I, you know, I, I so much oppose drinking and driving. I've lost people to it. I've seen people suffer for years because they were hit by drunk, a drunk driver. I oppose it so much, and I never, ever drink and drive myself. And, and yes, that is a concern. I live in the village, I have to deal with that all the time. People leaving events in the village, leaving some of those businesses in the village. And I drive through there so carefully, especially at night. But this is a trucking route. Driving road is a trucking route. And you have just dozens and dozens and dozens of big trucks going through there every day.
That's on our road.
Well, who's saying there, you are thinking they like to go down the road. You are thinking, they go right next to your road.
They don't come down our road.
You know, I'm speaking and you're not supposed to interrupt to me. So you're saying all these folks are going to come down your road, you actually don't really know that. And you guys could put up more signs to say, don't come down our road, this is private road. You can do all of that. But this road is designed for all of the traffic that would come to a business like So I just, I, I think just going by what neighbors say isn't always going to be fair. And sometimes there are a lot of fears that get kind of heated in these types of things. And I hope that you guys look at the objective criteria, because I think this sounds like a neat thing. And I, and I know when we've had, you know, even say a funeral in my family, and we were looking around for a venue in the county at the last minute, it was very hard to find anywhere. And we wanted somewhere nice, this might be somewhere that, that people would use. Thank you.
I do have a couple of things to say. First, I would probably love to have this thing if it was next door to them.
Yeah, there you go.
I think that I would love...
Then you might want to buy in a different zoning area.
I'm talking.
So was, yes. You talking over and over and over again, supposedly we only get one chance, but go ahead.
He has let him talk. He let you talk, you let him talk.
But he's had his chance.
So we can only talk once?
Yes. Yes.
They never said we can only talk once.
Oh, can we talk more than once, guys?
Let me down with this. Go, talk.
I would love it if it was by their place, okay? Secondly, you're right. It is a private drive, but there is vehicles that come down it. Yes, that is a road that everything comes down up and down. Also, we have an event venue that's downtown that people park in other people's parking lot that the police are not taking care of getting them out of that parking lot, if I'm not correct.
Not incorrect.
So with that being said, if they parked on the road, the police still wonder and do nothing about it.
Won't be enforced, absolutely not.
So with that being said, you know, the opportunity for Julie Byrd and the Mercinos, you have an opportunity to talk too. One last thing before I sit down is, as zoning administrator, my job is to facilitate a meeting like this, take an application from the people, look at property owners' requests, and this is a request from them for a conditional that's voluntarily. We didn't force them to come here, I didn't ask them to do this. They're voluntarily doing this. And then it goes to the planning commission. You guys have to make that decision. And also is an opportunity for the rest of my constituents and residents that are in this township to voice their concerns too. So I'm gonna sit down and before we close the public hearing, if the applicants and the owners have anything to say to, to do everything or discuss with the other people, now's your time.
Thank you. Yes, that's, I'm gonna get right to the applicants. Now, who care to address, please?
Julie Byrd, 2278 North Oak Grove Davidson. I can tell emotions are running really high. I don't think it's wise for me to, to add anything in addition. I appreciate everyone being here though, good and bad, and, and hearing your comments. Thank you.
Anybody else with after? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we will hold them under new visiting right now. Okay. I guess it's up to the board. Rodney was bad boy. Any discussion, board members? Any ideas, any?
I'm trying to put my words in, or my thoughts into words. We've had other people come here a few years ago from party barns. And they were in residential areas. A lot of the people did not know that it was being considered rezoning and/or conditional. They didn't come here for that. And we turned them down because it was in the wrong area. The better area is M24 because that's, you know, a very big public road. I just think we've got the party venue down in Metamora, which I hardly ever see anybody at. We have the Lions Club, which is pretty well booked. But there are some times when it's not. And now we're gonna have the party barn down over here on Best Property. And I'm inclined to think that three party barns are quite a lot. Because when you go into the city, and this is my personal observation over the last two or three years, and I'm taking other things into consideration. People aren't using big party venues because they can't afford to pay for the halls, the alcohol, the, everything that is associated with a wedding or a special event. They're doing it out in an open parkway or in a open setting where they don't have to spend a lot of money. And in these times, I just think this might not be the best time to do this kind of a project. It's just my own opinion. It's from personal observation in all the cities south. I've seen them over and over again, there's a couple in Rochester. I went to their banquet hall. It was a banquet hall, a wedding, a graduation party, they said, it's empty, it's been empty for three or four years, maybe five years. I pass by it all the time. I see Palace, that was a restaurant with, you know, a regular venue. Big parking lot, empty now. They don't even have parks. So it, it just doesn't seem to me feasible. That's my opinion.
All we gotta consider is their condition. Anybody else?
That's my opinion.
Got them somewhere. Any other board member that, any comments you want to put up there?
I, I do, in some ways, Anne is right, and I was thinking that throughout the night is that there had been more than one, at least.
Two, three.
Three that I'm aware of that have come and wanted to have weddings or venues on residential property or ag property and.
Close to residential.
And every one of them, I, my comment was, if you're doing a wedding for your niece, your granddaughter, there's no problem, have it. Are you doing it for profit? Every one of them said, yeah. And I said, if you're gonna run a business for profit, profit, do it in a commercial district that is where it belongs. So I'm a little torn on this one because, you know, I don't think, we can have our opinions as far as if we think if she was allowed to do this, it's gonna be successful or not. That's not our place to.
No, thank you.
To do that. I mean, that's her decision and I'm pretty sure we still live in America, so if she wants to take that, that risk and that, given our permission, that, that's her right to do that. I do understand not wanting it in your front or backyard. I guess I have one in my backyard now, so, I mean, but I do disagree a little bit. I do think there's a need. And I do appreciate what Susan said from the last meeting that, at least the presentation that the African gave last month, it seemed more like business meetings, more daytime stuff. Yeah, I'm not saying they weren't gonna have wedding reception, but it didn't sound to me like, you know, they were looking to have, you know, keg bashes every Friday and Saturday night. So, and I think we can control that with limitations. So I'm not really opposed to it. I, I, you know, I do a hundred percent respect the residents here and their concerns. I do understand my biggest concern would be the private road and traffic going up and down it. I certainly think we can put in some restrictions down the road if this approved as far as a time that no noise can be heard out of the property. I mean, the township has noise ordinance currently. So, I mean, my, if I'm gonna sit here over the last few years and tell people they're not having a wedding venue or doing anything on agricultural residential property and now an app comes in, in an office venue or at least, you know, that type of commercial setting and asks for this, I don't really know how, you know, I mean, at least my opinion is I don't know how I could kind of, no, go somewhere else now too. So that's my two cents.
Anybody else?
There is B2 property available. I just had, was it two days ago, a real estate guy asked if I wanna sell a piece. It's a right price, I'll sell. Available pieces, why are we trying to cram this one up?
Well, okay. No more comments? Okay. I guess we're gonna have a roll call vote to the recommendation to the township board. Is it yes or no? Somebody give me your motion.
And it's approved or denied?
You're looking at me? Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the request for the conditional rezoning or the recommendation. I'll make a motion to deny the recommendation to the township board for conditional rezoning of parcel ID 4401500807200. If I motion, you turn it down or whatever.
You get a second, huh?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote on Anne's motion to deny the recommendation to the township board for conditional rezoning of the parcel number which she cited. Roll call vote. Dan Miller.
No.
Tom Wise.
No.
Andrew Darian.
Yes.
Phil Bellinger.
Yes.
Kevin Nysli is absent. Lance Gould.
Yes.
George Nash.
No.
I guess I don't know what we do with the mayor. Throw up in their lap, eleven?
Or postpone, postpone till next meeting.
Well, I don't know, you have to, I don't think there's anything, I don't think you postpone anything. I just think.
So this was the motion that the commission listed?
We would go right to the township board with a deadlock decision by the planning commission. And then the township board will have the final decision.
Should I make another motion to recommend that our, our deadlock go to township board?
What happened this, today, this meeting, everybody did their job. The applicants came, the residents came, the only administrator was here. And we queued the van, and the van spoke. So the van's decision.
Township does a final say. Either way.
Final say, we could only recommend.
Even if everybody said yes, everybody said no, they can still overturn the lay commission.
They have final yes or no?
No.
No?
Versus recommending. So make sure you're at the township meeting.
Okay.
Which is what?
Next Monday, seven o'clock.
We only have no communication, no, nobody work, our son is not here, so I don't really have any more discussion.
Motion to adjourn?
That's what I'm hoping for.
That's what I said.